...warns that, so we're all excited about the opening day at the new Cubs Park and excited about that, and so we'll -- how many of you going to the game today? Gee, I'm sorry. I was gonna say we'll see you at the ballpark, but I expect all city employees will be working diligently.
Most of us think they can have a --
Yes, first item on the agenda this morning is the review of next Monday night's regular council meeting agenda. Items 2 through 3A, items 3B through 3D, items 3E through 4C, items 5A through 6C. I know we're going to come back to 5A at the end, so we'll go through the rest of the agenda and then come back to 5A. Item 6D through 7A, and item 7B.
It's not only the 7, what is 7A and 7B?
It's a minor general plan amendment.
Those require public --
So it's gotta have a public hearing, yeah.
I was reading too many zoning cases. Should read this at 11:30.
Yeah. Okay, go back to item 5A. Mr. Clevander and Ms. Zilanka, good morning.
Counsel, DFC, Water Resources Director, and Christine Zilanka is with me from Development Sustainability, she's the director there. Just want to call attention to an item on your agenda for Monday. It's item 5A. The issue is, this is gonna be an introduction of an ordinance to modify the terms and conditions for the sale of utilities. Current issue we have, we've been approached by a number of developers who have, are proposing a, what's called a residential small lot, multi-lot, private drive development. Some of us have heard the term cluster development, six-pack or eight-pack, that's what we're talking about. One of the issues is that, that type of development, based on how it's configured and the private streets are not the, we couldn't provide service, it's not currently allowed per terms and conditions, so we'd like to make a modification, we're proposing a modification to the terms and conditions for the sale of utilities, so that we can accommodate these folks. What that's gonna look like, or what we have to address in there are some frontage requirements, where the solid waste barrel placement would be, and then there's an appeal process that council has, and we'd like to just make that a little bit more flexible. So this is what they look like in the, this is an example out of Phoenix. In the foreground, that street there would be a public street. The narrow street shown connecting is where the homes would front, so in this case, looks like there might be eight homes on here, and so that's, that's a private, narrow drive.
Actually, they're backing, they're not fronting.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, I'm looking at the garage, I guess, that's the access point, and that's where the utilities would be provided.
Well, there's a big difference between where they front and where they don't front.
Yeah, they're rear loaded.
And that's gonna come in later when you talk about --
Understood.
Where, when you, it comes in when we come up out where they have to be situated, too, so go ahead.
Okay, so the current requirements in terms and conditions --
And, and just so we, that's a private drive?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Private drive. Current conditions, you must meet all of these to get your utilities. You must front on public right-of-way, you must be served from a public main line, and have a separate service connection to each parcel, and you need to be directly adjacent to a main line for the, and the service connections would be as well. What we're proposing is some changes and just meet one of these conditions. You would, either you can front on a public right-of-way, like typical, a typical home would, you could front on a dedicated private street, which would look similar to a, it would, would meet the minimum city requirements, so it would kinda look like a, a public street, or in this case, is what's gonna allow these, you could front, or as we discussed, along a single private drive, common parcel, so that would be like a tract, a homoresuscitation tract, and then the --
And this, this is why I'm, the front, the definition of front, because on this one, you know, define front, 'cause on, on that cluster, they don't, the front of the house is not along one of these, but the back and the service access is along the back. So I think we need to be very clear on how we define front.
In this case, and there's a variety of developments that we anticipate coming in that could face either way. In this particular case, it's rear-loaded, but the solution that we're proposing would be the same whether it's front-loaded or rear-loaded. Sense your question?
Well, not really, 'cause you say front, and when you say front-loaded or rear-loaded, and then use front as a term to define both, it's confusing. I guess what you're talking about is service access, is really. To you, in our definition, is the front of the house where the service, where the service access is?
Perhaps, Mayor, we just disregard the, the language of front, and it'd be adjacent to the --
Okay, adjacent to, it's gotta be, that's great, okay. So either side, front or rear, it has to be adjacent to.
Yes.
Gotcha, all right, that works.
Okay. And then, so these utilities, if they would come down that private drive, they would be privately owned and maintained, and then the meters would be out along the public street, and so the service lines would connect on the other side of the meter, they'd collect, connect down that private street to connect to the parcels. Okay, so it, all that does is make it more flexible to accommodate these developments, and we, we have a standard detail showing that private street and the configuration of the water lines and where the meter boxes are, and the sewer line as well.
What do we do if we have gas? Now, this is water sewer, what about gas? Are you gonna handle that later?
I did not address gas in, in this one.
Aren't we gonna have to somehow decide how we're, where we're gonna let them put gas meters, 'cause I can't imagine gas meters would all be along the sidewalk.
I think we're gonna have to probably follow up with energy resources on that. This is the terms and conditions for sale of primarily water and wastewater. Is gas in place else?
Mayor, generally, the gas meters are up against the --
Right.
So it wasn't a consideration for this change.
But it, it's gonna have to be a consideration, 'cause now you have gas, it's the same basic philosophy, where your meter is and where the public, our city of Mesa accesses to the lot, as opposed to where it goes into the, to the house. Here, what we've decided is that we can't have meters, or we're not gonna have meters along a private drive right by the house. We're gonna put it out in the public or the private street, and then go from there. If you go gas, I mean, I think it makes the most sense for safety and all sorts of other things, but it does run contrary to the philosophy that you're running here. Does that, does that make sense?
Right, it's, I, we did have the gas discussion, I'm sorry, I forgot for a moment, and we did agree that keeping the gas right at the house made the most sense, because you've got the gas meter.
Yeah, and that's fine, and that, and that doesn't create any problems for us or anything like that, I don't --
It's the, it's the industry standard on the gas side, for the, for the meter to be immediately adjacent to the, the residence.
Okay. I'm fine, I just wanna make sure we're covered. All right.
One other issue in there, addresses solid waste. Currently, terms and conditions doesn't address where the solid waste placement would be. These, because these, these, these private streets typically have a dead end and no turnaround for solid waste vehicles, residents would be asked to roll their barrels, their recycling and their, their trash collection barrels out to the public street, and so there'd be a location --
What if it's a private street?
Be out --
Just make sure your definition's out to the street, to the main street where they do have it, okay?
Right.
Because most of these will probably be on private streets, feeding a cluster. I don't wanna get technical here, but --
No, you're right, that could, you could have, you could have the private street where the homes are adjacent to, and then the main drag, if you will, could be public or private.
The modifications do account for that, Mayor.
Okay.
Okay, oh, and those, for your information, those would, the curbs would also be stamped, and so the, these barrels, they have particular placement for barrels for each unit, so that they know where to put their barrels, and they need to be a certain distance apart for ease of collection. Again, here's, here's about where the solid waste collection would be, so this would be on the either public or private, but the main drag, and you can see the meter boxes there, so the meters are located in that area, and the solid waste collection barrels would be in the same area. And then the last thing that I briefly mentioned before, for some reason, in terms and conditions, there's an appeal process that allows council to modify, eliminate, or approve alternatives to these designs, but only if they're within the service area and outside corporate city limits. What this will do, this change, if you are agreeable to this, will give the council flexibility to make modifications anywhere within the service area, inside city limits. So, that's what we had to present today, Christine.
Yeah, and just a quick note on that, that's really the process that we've been using for the last several years. If somebody's requiring a modification to the terms and conditions, first we take it to the, the city manager's office. If they agree or disagree, really, either way, and the applicant wants to bring it to, first, the Sustainability and Transportation Committee, we go there. If they agree with the modification, then it comes to full council. It makes it extremely difficult for staff if there's not an appeal process, so we, we just really feel that this makes it most flexible for everybody that's potentially wanting to receive city utilities.
And just, I guess, some background, the reason why this is coming up now is we've, we've got at least two or three of these projects in the pipeline now, and there's, you know, judging from how development is going, there's gonna be more of these.
Right, and what we were hoping to do is establish what the standard solution is, so that all of the developers know what it is. We've addressed all of the servicing opportunities for the city of Mesa, whether it's water, wastewater, or the solid waste trucks, so that we don't impede our operations and we have a standard solution.
Okay.
And Mayor, one last thing, so I'm just looking at the edits that are proposed to terms and conditions, and the language that says parcel must have frontage. If we think that's gonna be a problem, then perhaps we --
Parcel, meaning the specific lot?
Yes.
That is gonna create a problem, because none of these, in a cluster, they don't have frontage.
And perhaps, Mr. Taylor, perhaps we modify the language and talk about being adjacent to --
Well, that, that also runs contrary to your, meet, must meet one of these, 'cause if someone is, when you say frontage, you're just gonna have to define frontage as meaning, as being one of, one of these three.
That's, that's what it does, Mayor. It, here's the existing --
Well, that's not what it does now, just, see, the reason I'm saying that is that in some cities, like in the city of Phoenix, it actually, you can't have what you have here, where, where the, the front door of the unit actually is onto a parcel or a tract. It has to front a street, and that's a big difference in development. So how you define frontage is gonna be, gonna be pivotal.
I think what we did was, we, we took some of the existing verbiage and reworked it, and it talked about frontage, but when we're in, in the terms, when it describes frontage, it says either the, the parcel in question has to be adjacent to have frontage on a public street, a private street, or one of these private drive --
Or an HOA or a parcel.
Right, which itself, then, would have --
Yeah, be careful of that definition, 'cause you just described frontage by defining it as frontage. It's one of those circular definitions. I, I don't wanna get technical, you know, you know what the gist is.
We can, we can certainly check it and make sure we didn't foul.
Yeah, all right.
And then, a last thing, Mayor, you mentioned Phoenix, this is a model that Phoenix and Scottsdale both use.
Yeah, I know 'em well, so. And I, I wanna thank staff, because this is like the third or fourth, and I know we, this sounds geeky, this is really a big deal, because it defines how we develop, and, and the reason, they've been so good in, I mean, I did a lot of these developments in my previous life, and actually helped write cluster ordinances in like at least four cities in this, in the thing, so I'm a little geekish about this, but the reason being is that I've, I've screwed up on at least one of these in every city, so I want us to avoid those problems, and the thing that I've --
We've learned from your mistakes, sir.
Yeah, I, I'm hoping we learn from my mistakes, and usually it was 'cause the city, these definitions, they mean a big deal, especially in these kind of developments, 'cause you don't have six inches to spare, and how you define frontage is a huge deal, because now you're dealing with, you're dealing with solid waste, you're dealing with water, you're dealing with sewer, you're dealing with gas, you're dealing with, you know, all these fire, all these things play in, and they all have a different idea of what frontage and what those things mean, and that's where you run, that's why we had to write these ordinance for these cities, is that every time we turned around, the fire department says, "No, I have to see an address from a street where my fire truck is," and that's why Phoenix, that's what their standard is. Well, in Phoenix, it's a ridiculous standard, because it limits how you can develop this. Mesa, I've done two of these in Mesa, and we didn't have that, and it's worked just fine, 'cause they allowed you to be able to see it from, you know, a cluster type of thing.
Right, and actually, we've worked very closely with the fire marshal on this particular situation, and when you get to, they would fight a residential fire from either that private or public right-of-way.
Right.
That's where either the, the third or the fourth house in, if it's a six-pack or an eight-house, would be sprinkled, so that they'd be able to run their hoses there.
So that's a standard that you're putting in on this?
Yeah, that's the, under the fire code.
Okay.
And that's not a change, that's just been a clarification.
So we're allowing an eight, an eight, an eight-pack cluster, or just six?
Well, that's just this example, so far, everything that we've had in the city are six-packs, but --
Usually, the reason we went six-pack is so they could meet the fire distance, and they didn't have to sprinkle that.
Currently, the interpretation from the fire marshal has been the, the last two houses, so the third house on each side is sprinkled, with the truck being in the either private or public right-of-way.
That's, that's new.
And nobody's, we, nobody's had a problem with that, sir?
Well, I, I'm just saying that, that's new. I'm not fighting it, I'm just saying, okay. No one's had a problem with it, I'm okay with it.
Gilbert, I know there's a development over there in Gilbert that did the same thing. Fire's not usually the issue, it's, if it's burning, we'll find it. It's EMS going.
EMS.
Heart attacks aren't quite as obvious. You know, that's, that's really good to know, that our fire department, wow, it's good to know our firefighters are cracking up, they can find a burning building.
I guarantee you, if your house is on fire, I know where it is.
Do you have no idea how much comfort that gives us, Scott?
It's the heart attack part, we have a little bit more difficulty locating.
Well, it's not the location, I mean, this is a firefighting thing, and that's why I'm saying, 'cause usually you have the 150-foot, you had the distance, it was more of a distance thing than it was a sprinkle deal, and, and, you know, the, that's why these could never go deeper than six. Now, are you proposing in the years that it can go to, it can go to eight on a cluster? And go to four feet?
With this solution, I think this would work for an eight-pack.
Okay, I mean, 'cause that was always the limiting factor on an eight-pack, was the distance, 'cause once you get past three, you can't, you couldn't, and the Vice Mayor is shaking his --
I remember this.
Yeah, you couldn't, you couldn't meet the 150-foot.
I think it still is a distance issue, depending on the width of the lot, so typically, when you get to the third house, you've gone past their distance that the, the fire department --
But if it's sprinkled, then, then the distance doesn't matter?
Right.
Two hundred feet in, plus another two hundred feet.
But if you had, for example, if you had a four-pack, certainly, you know, they'd be able to reach it, and they wouldn't need the sprinkles.
Okay, all right.
Thank you very much.
Vice Mayor?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, just want, as far as the appeals process, is making it as streamlined as possible, I appreciate the idea that it's this ever-changing, you know, private sector of the market, we're leaving in a nice process that allows folks to come in and, and move with the changes, but it's, if we can make it as streamlined, it sounds like that's what you're doing.
That's exactly what we try to do, and to provide that appeals process, first, again, we go to the city manager's office, then a subcommittee, because the, the ultimate idea is council is the one that adopts the codes, and so staff can't make changes to those, so if a particular individual or developer wants to make a change, it really has to come back to council to see if there's a consensus on making that change. But we make it as streamlined, as easy as possible for them as we possibly can.
Okay, and just a side note, we've gone over this before, this doesn't relate to the service enters, but I'm just gonna put a note, and on that picture you had, it was nice that they were all really short drives, like six feet. Just remember, for planning, Mr. Wesley, don't allow anything more than that, 'cause if you have a 10-foot drive in there, someone's gonna park sideways on that.
Yes.
Yeah, it's either six feet or 18 feet, don't, don't do anything between that. Seen it happen. Okay?
Thank you very much.
Any other questions? I know you all wanna move on, so we're gonna move on. Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is item 2A, which was going to be a discussion on the city council taking a formal stance on Senate Bill 1062, since the governor, as Councilmember Kavanaugh, she must have seen that this was on our agenda for this morning, wanted to make sure she acted prior to the Mesa City Council discussing it, and she took action and vetoed 1062 last night, so if there's no objection, item 2A, we'll just skip over that, since it's sort of a moot point now. Item 2B, here, presentation, discuss make funding recommendations for the city's fiscal year 1415 Community Development Block grant, home investment partnerships, and emergency solutions grant, and human services programs. Ms. Albright.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Okay, so, we're here today in front of you to get approval for the federal funding recommendations, and possibly human services funding recommendations from, that were coming forward from the, I always get this backwards, Cultural and, no, Community and Cultural Development Committee. What happened to my slides? There we go. So, just to let you, just to recap the process, it's the same as last year, it had a few tweaks in it, but basically, the count, the staff performed a technical review that is weighted at 70% of their total rating, and the presentations that they gave to the Housing and Community Development Board is rated at 30% for a total of 100 points. Same thing with human services, however, there is a different rating tool, and I believe that was all part of your package. We were anticipating, when we first started this, 5% reduction across the board in the, in the federal grants. We still have not been given our allocation, we're hoping to have it sometime in March, but we are hearing whispers that it may not be that big. So if there is more funding, part of the recommendation is a methodology for dealing with more or less funds. And that option is to eliminate or to add based on the ratings that the, the customer has, or the application has.
What do you mean by 5%?
Um, no.
If CDVG comes in a smaller percentage --
Scott? If CDVG comes in 10% less than what we expect, then we would reduce each one of the awards 10%?
No, we would, they all have a, a rated score, so we would just start at the top and go all the way down until we run out of money. So if we have less money, we're gonna fund less people, if we have more money, we're gonna be able to fund more people.
Okay, 'cause we've had that, my worry was, we've had that discussion before, and sometimes cutting 10% kills a project, whereas, you know, so it'd be better to prioritize. Great.
Counsel, you okay? Okay.
Most of what Mesa funds does fall under the category of benefiting the low to mod, low to moderate income persons. The human services model was set up several years ago, and it's based on, it's a safety model, and here outlines kind of what we look at when we're, we're analyzing those applications. Here's the timeline, you can see where we are. We will be back in front of this council on April 21st with the entire annual plan for approval, so that we can make that submittal to HUD by May 15th. So as far as the funding goes, the code enforcement section, we had recommended full funding to the city of Mesa Development and Sustainability, but as part of the, the subcommittee's discussion is, there's a voluntary co-compliance program that was not going to end up being funded this year based on the ratings. So we did have a million dollars in prior year CDBG funding, and that came from either contracts that didn't go forward, or because of the timing of our process with the city's budgeting process, there was proposal to fund, I believe, four code officers last year, but during the budget process, two were removed, and so we had some extra money that we always, our policy now is we put that back into the next year's pot for allocation. So we had quite a bit of funds available that won't be necessarily ongoing funds, so we typically like to recommend those go for capital projects, so they get used up usually quickly, and nobody is expecting to get those funds on a regular basis. So what we did in co-compliance is, we are recommending, and I can't remember if the board made this recommendation or not, but that an additional $100,000 be added to the pool of funds for the city of Mesa co-compliance, so that they can develop a voluntary co-compliance within those designated tracks to, I can't speak to the actual details of how that project will work, but I believe that it's gonna be like an educational, an engagement, community engagement type of process, but this would allow us to keep that component in our co-compliance efforts.
Counsel, Richardson?
Yeah, one of the things that we've been talking about is embedding code compliance in the neighborhoods. Neighborhoods need to take accountability for the way they look, they need to figure out the resources, and we need to help train the skills to be able to look at their neighborhoods, you know, work with their neighbors, you know, instead of, it's the carrot approach instead of the stick, and so that's the kind of capacity that we've been trying to build through the, West Mesa CDC had been running this program. Well, because of some HUD regulations, it's, it's hard to do it that way now, they're coming down saying, "Oh, no, you have to be able to do certain things within a code compliance to be able to fall under that category," and so we've had to scramble to try to find a place for it to land, so we can continue with that principle.
If I could just add there, the vision on this is that the additional temporary code officers that would be funded to work specifically in the CDBG areas, that they would continue to work to leverage involvement with the registered neighborhoods, with neighborhood activists, that we would collaborate with neighborhood outreach and solid waste. We do have abatement funds in CDBG where we could fund dumpsters to go in and clean up, say, on a block-by-block basis, but really engage, as Councilmember Richardson said, the neighbors, the community leaders, to try to get them to, to work long-term, so it's not going in and just using a stick on one house, but it's really working on a voluntary basis with an entire neighborhood to understand what they need to do, and give them the resources as far as ongoing support from the private sector, from the nonprofits, for homeowner training, all of those kinds of things, but to try to get the neighborhoods cleaned out the first time using these additional funds.
Christine, one, two, three, oh, sorry.
There is an example of that, once you talk, I mean, it, does it, we've had some neighborhoods have been able to six-pack --
Right, the West Mesa Marlboro neighborhood, is that which one you're talking about? They've actually been active for a number of years now, before we even took over code compliance, and there's actually two women that have taken this on, all by themselves, they have a website set up, they basically chastise each other if they find that there's a neighbor whose weeds are overgrown, or they've got an inoperable vehicle. They have a process that, that they work with that resident, that neighbor, by themselves before they ever get the city involved, and if they can get compliance, then that's great, they have newsletters and regular website that they put out there, and the only time it comes to the city is if they can't get that voluntary compliance from their neighbor, so it's neighbor to neighbor, not the city coming in and doing it.
Okay, Counsel, Kavanaugh?
Well, I have two issues. Actually, to that point, the Marlboro Mesa one, Ms. Zilanka is portraying a rosy view of, of that program, because it, it does work in some respects, people have trained in it, but the bigger frustration, honestly, is working with the city, and getting the city to respond to code violations that the neighbors identify. So they do work hard to try to solve problems between themselves, but it hasn't been exactly a satisfactory experience in terms of the last couple of years, and that's, that's something that is a challenge that my constituents have expressed to me for several years in a row, and so that, you know, it's, it's not all, you know, fun bells and whistles with that one.
Well, I'll certainly look in to see what the problems are there. I was not aware that we had problems of not being responsive, I, I will check into that today and, and see what's going on.
Well, that, that gets back to the basic question, is with code compliance, a lot of times is, and I can't differentiate many times whether it's an issue of resources or whether it's an issue of performance. I mean, do we have the resources that just aren't getting the job done, or, you know, there's areas of our city where we frankly are understaffed and, and we're overburdened?
We currently have seven code officers, two of them are directly in, they're funded by CDBG funding, so they can only work, and it's approximately 19% of the city, give or take. I have officers that have over 42 square mile beet areas, basically, and I have officers with over 200 open cases. So there is certainly a challenge with resources. We do try to respond to complaints within three business days. I'll be honest, sometimes we miss the boat there, we try not to. One of the issues is, is the follow-up. When you've got 200 open cases, there's only so much any one individual can do in a 40-hour period.
Well, I think what we found, I think what we found is, you know, this was one of the areas that we very reluctantly cut when we were faced with huge, huge deficits. But on the other hand, this city, frankly, the citizens have historically not wanted the city to, in their view, meddle in what they viewed as, as private property rights. We've seen a dramatic shift in that area, where I think most every council member hears from people who are, you know, one of, I think, the byproducts of, of the way that people view their community is that they are being more, they're expecting more of their neighbors, and they're expecting more of the city. The one thing that has not changed is that, is our ability to generate extra resources to reduce the, the load on those case officers. So we have these two, these -- So, we have these two, these two pressures sort of intersecting, where we have higher expectations, which I think is good, but we're still resource-challenged.
One of the-
And that, that creates a problem.
Right, one of the things that Mr. Brady reminded me the other day, when the recession first hit, and we went through such a difficult time in having to reduce resources, we actually had a joint program with building inspectors-
Right.
-where they went out and they were expected to do approximately 25% of their time doing code. So, that clearly increased our resource baseline from just the seven officers. The great thing, and also the problem, has been over the last two years, when we've seen the incredible increase in development activities, I can no longer have my building inspectors going out and doing code.
They're busy.
They're way too busy, and we can't tell a developer they can't pour their concrete because they're out working on a code case. So, so that resource honestly has had to go away because the economy's been coming back so strongly in Mesa.
Councilwoman Kavanaugh, then vice mayor.
I continue, and that's one of the reasons I voted against doing that several years ago, because I predicted this very thing would happen. The other thing that it's important to realize, just to follow up on the Marble Mesa issue, is that's not a CDBG area, and so, that creates increased challenges to, to have response to it. The neighbors there volunteered to be a pilot program to work with you, but their chagrin is that not getting follow-up when they think there are violations that they've been trained to see. The other comment I have is that this, the voluntary compliance program that you're presenting today was not something that was presented to our committee. I know at the committee, we were looking at, we were looking at the challenge of the HUD regulations, which required some kind of enforcement authority and citation authority, and when our committee discussions concluded, I know we had asked you to explore whether there was some way to delegate that, have an agreement to delegate that citation authority, for example, to the West Mesa CDC, to continue what's been a very effective program. And so, that was, that's at least my concern, is to, is what happened with that option.
We, I can speak to that. That's where we run into the HUD regulations. Basically, there were three options to continuing this program, and that was to, if we funded West Mesa CDC, which was, we could, this was an open competitive process, but they would have to be able to write tickets, and then they would have to be their own code agency. We cannot duplicate services, so we would have to carve out a portion of the city in which they ran code, and the city would run code in the other areas. And they would have their own, they'd have to take their own tickets, you know, and that just didn't seem to make sense. Two agencies providing code service in Mesa. The other option is, we could delegate, we could put this money in the city's code program, and they could go out for a, put their own RFP on the street to have an agency win that RFP to provide that service. That's still an option. But then, the third option was to put the money into the city's program and allow them to possibly hire temps, and the city would run it, and we already have the processes in place. We could, could make sure that we aren't duplicating services, we could, the, the reporting and the measurements could be consistent. So, that's kind of where we outlined that. So, HUD really has, because of the procurement regulations, pretty much outlined those three options, and because we wanted to put it under code enforcement. We most certainly could fund a voluntary code compliance effort, but with CDBG dollars, but it would fall under public service, and our public service has a 15% cap. We're already there. So, for it to be under this category, those were the only options.
And we have spent a lot of time since the last Community and Cultural Development Committee, trying to figure out a way to make this work. Laura Heineman, who's the deputy over code and inspections, she and I met with Cynthia Dunham, I think it was last week, to try to talk through this model and to see how this would work, that it would be the city funding temporary officers as opposed to running them through West Mesa CDC, and she was good with that.
Okay?
So, next category, economic development. We did recommend funding all of the applications there, however, West Mesa CDC is being funded with that prior year funding. Under Acquisition and Rehab, all applications were recommended for funding. And then, under Public Facility, this is where we pretty much recommended all of that, the rest of that prior year funding go. Again, because we are looking here at capital projects that are ready to go. One of the problems we're having is this year, HUD checks our account every May, and we have to be under a ratio of 1.5, our current year's allocation. We are not going to make that this year. Because of last year, we put a lot of money into some large capital projects that we have had difficulty getting off the ground due to HUD's environmental rules. So, we're not going to make that, but you can't miss it more than one year. So, as it is, missing it this year, we're going to have to put an action plan together for HUD, show that we are not going to miss it again. So, we really want to be secure that this money is going to get spent before next May.
I think you just defined the beauty of the federal government. So, what you're telling me, if I understand, is that we're being chastised for not meeting a timeline which we can't meet because the same agency's requirements won't allow us to meet the timeline? Did I hear you correctly?
Yes.
Oh, okay. That's all I have to say.
Partly due to the location of the projects, they had some historical issues.
No, 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 totally due to the federal agency. Let's just go there.
They're still at war with those people, so just.
Oh, okay.
So, we have recommended that the funds go into some park improvements that are ready to go, pretty much here in the next six months, so we can be assured this money will get spent. And these park improvements were, were already underway, and they ran out of money, so this is a great opportunity to finish those.
So, basically, this is a use it or lose it program?
Yes.
And what you're saying is, if we don't put this, these funds to use, we're at risk of losing them?
Yes. And one other thing on here, it's really put on here just for transparency, it'll be coming back to use separately, and that is the Senior Center solar panels. We have an opportunity to cover the cost of adding those solar panels, because we do pay out of general fund for those utilities. So, by putting those solar panels on there, we might, we should be able to reduce some of those utilities. And so, that, they will be coming back to you separately. Under Public Service, we basically funded until we hit our cap. Now, here's where, if we do receive more CDBG dollars than we anticipated, we will take this cap and maximize it. So, we will add money back into this area until we hit the, whatever that 15% is of whatever we get allocated, and the rest will just keep going down the lines.
If I could ask real quick, and I'm sorry, I didn't look into this before, those ones where the requests on the bottom there were, the recommend was not to fund at all?
We, yeah, we ran out of money. Base, these, these are lined up based on the rated scores, so this-
Not that they, not to fund them.
Right.
Tammy's third. No, well, actually, it is, because, I guess, well, let me finish my question. The question was, they were based on the rated score, so rather than proportionately cut everyone, what you decided to do was to go down the line based on the rated scores, and then when you ran out of money, you ran out of money, which is why the Save the Family, Homeless Families Intervention Project was funded at only $9,100, because basically that was the balance you had left.
That's-
Okay. Now, were these items funded in previous years? Are these agencies rely, or not relying, was the anticipation with this application, these would be carryover fundings, or fundings that we have funded, or projects we have funded previously that now will not be funded? Or were these new projects and new items? Or a combination?
I, I think I've got, I don't recall whether, we did do an analysis. I know West Mesa CDC was funded, and that's where we talked about adding that 100,000 to our city's code compliance. So, basically, we are still maintaining that, that service, we're just doing-
I don't need to get into the specifics, I'm just looking at the general philosophy.
Save the Family last year was funded 100,000.
Okay, so, when you look at a new leaf, the East Valley Women's Center, and the Aid to Adoption, and the Fay Evans, were those ones that were funded last year now are being funded at zero because we ran out of the money?
I think East Valley Women's Center is a new one, I don't think we funded it last year.
Okay.
Fay Evans is new, and-
But West Mesa CDC co-compliance was something we funded under public service last year.
All right.
So, some of them are new, and I, one of-
So, we're max, on the, on the, the CDC, there's a different issue there. On these other ones, though, we, you made a policy, I just want to understand the policy decision. Rather than proportionally cut all programs, we made the, you're proposing the policy decision, which is to fully fund those that score highest until we run out of money, and then zero, is if, that's what I'm understanding, right?
Yes.
That's okay. I'm not arguing one way or another, I just want, I just want to understand what the philosophy was.
Yeah, we've actually done that for the last couple of years.
Yeah, I, I know, I just want to make sure that's still what we're doing.
Yeah, being, having worked in the nonprofit sector, and a lot of times, these agencies will write a scope of work for a project, and then, when, in the past, we'd cut it by 10 or 15%, we wouldn't adjust those scopes of work, so they were still expected to deliver a full project for, you know, 80% of the money, or 85% of the money, and they found it really difficult. And this started to play into the discussion that we'll have in a few minutes about the ABC Fund, where they, they can use some of the CDBG money for project delivery, and it's hard to get the general funds to run the agency operations, and that's why we're trying to get the leverage in there, so people can actually deliver effective projects.
Yeah, so, we decided it would be counterproductive to cut a little bit on everyone.
Right.
So, we decided as a, as a policy to fully fund those that scored highest.
Right.
Because the, and the net impact would actually be less, even though it would be great to have enough money to fund everyone. Okay.
Yeah, it's unfortunate. And I do have a question for Community and Cultural Committee. I, I learned in the past, when you start going, well, why is this one, not this one? There's so much complexity to it, there's been a tremendous amount of work, so I think it'd be great to have just a quick overview from Chair, Community Cultural, how we got here. You know, we're feeling some lobbying pressure, different groups that got left out, and I tended always in the past, and I still am there, to rely heavily on, on the recommendations you make to council and how we're doing it, but I, I just don't understand, I haven't, I haven't seen what you've been doing, so.
Sure. You know, there's the, as Tammy explained a little bit earlier, you know, there's the, the process where the staff scores it, and then we have additional set of eyes in the public with some of our committee structure, Citizens Committee structure, looking and ranking those scores. And, and, and all those scores are based on the applications that are submitted, and, and it has to fit with the city's priorities as we outline in our, what's the plan that-
Our consolidated plan.
Our consolidated plan, I couldn't remember the term for it. You know, so, so everything's tested against that, it's also tested against our council priorities, and so that's how we come up with, with the list.
Just to answer, a quick note, Mayor, is that East Valley Women's Center and Fay Evans are new, Aid to Adoption of Special Kids are, was funded with ABC last year, and then we've already talked about. One thing that we are seeing is, requests go up every year. I mean, many of these requests could be anywhere from 5,000 to 20,000 more than they received last year. So, that choose, the pot's not growing, so, you know, it's, for instance, just to give you a, a new leaf at top, last year we received 180, this year asked for 200. Go down to, the next one is a new leaf, the apartments, La Masita Apartments, went from 25 to 42. We had two new ones, Community Bridges and Chicanal Porlo Casa that weren't funded last year, so, it's just, we take in the applications, we do the, the ratings, the ranking, and then funded, as it goes.
And I appreciate this feedback. So, you realize now, we have folks in the audience, we've had this great process we go through, and there's some folks that are, agencies, all providing wonderful service, but how do we do with such limited resources? And then, as councilmembers that aren't on Community and Cultural, at least, I'll speak for myself, that I feel very apprehensive about going against any of the recommendations, because there's been such an amazing, or rather, very in-depth process going through. And so, generally, the model you're seeing, and Mr. Councilmember Richardson's has mentioned this, this is how we've done the last two years, we fund, if more funding comes in, and so, the only thing I would hope is, as we look through, and maybe some of our social service friends that are here, is, you know, we went through these difficult times at a city level several years ago, and we had to figure out a different way, or how we were going to fund or consolidate. I, I think if it continues at the federal level, that we have these reductions, and it's going to put pressure on our, us as a council to make these decisions, that we should be rewarding innovation, consolidation, a different way of doing business, and it sounds exactly as Councilmember Richardson said, is they're looking at our priorities, and, and so I would hope that, you know, as people are making pleadings, and you need to fund us, that they realize that there's a complexity to this, and we need to be smart about it. So, that, that's the message I would deliver.
Councilwoman Kavanaugh?
And to the Vice Mayor's point, another one of the recommendations of the committee, which is at the end of our report, is the committee unanimously recommended that the city, look to the city council to explore increasing the, the general fund allocation to, into the Human Services category on an incremental basis over a number of years to try to bring some of the funding back up, because that allocation was significantly cut a number of years ago, and now you've got the, the other pressure of the uncertainty of the federal funds as well. But that's, that was one of our recommendations as well, to provide some relief to agencies that are doing very good work, and innovative work within the community. So, that's, that's one of the recommendations to consider as a, as a, as one of the remedies to look at.
Councilman Summers?
Tammy, can you talk about, this is not just the council committee that's making the funding recommendations, there's another committee process-
Yes.
...outside of that, that makes recommendations to the city council, and I think it's important to have a little, at least a little bit of understanding of that. What I'd like to get my head around is how the programs that we've recommended for funding are going to kind of go hand-in-hand with, with the city, with services that the city historically provides, because what, what I've noticed in some of these, for example, we have one on domestic violence shelter, we have several others that are fully funded than they should be, because if they're not, what ends up happening is, since there would be a lack of availability of those social services, then inevitably what happens is, the fire department gets called more, the police department gets called more, and there, it places a greater demand on municipal services. So, how is it, who's involved in the process for making these recommendations? Is PD, fire, or others involved at work?
No. The, the process works as, staff has about a 10-page scoring tool, which I believe was put as one of your attachments, and it, it is a technical review, does this comply with the five-year consolidated plan that has been approved by council? Now, some of our highest priorities in that, in that plan are homelessness, so, I mean, housing needs, economic, domestic violence, I believe economic development is, is considered a high priority, too. So, as we look at the applications as they come in, we look at the priorities set in the consolidated plan, and they receive so many points, it's very high priority or medium priority. So, it's a pretty extensive technical review, and that is weighted at 70% of their total score, and then-
And this is not a secret tool, it's available to-
Oh, no, we give it out at, at, long before we even get the application, so they can all see what it is we're going to be looking at. And then, the board, the Housing and Community Development Board, here's a presentation that outlines their agency and what they're planning on using the money for, and the board that has a scoring tool, which is also, I believe, attachment, and that is weighted at 30% of the total score, for a total of 100. And then, that's what sets their rank. And then, that rank goes to the council subcommittee for funding.
I think the biggest challenge we have is that cap. Public service is very strong, it's a huge need here, and when the federal government sets a 15% cap on it, it makes it very difficult to fund a lot of these programs that we have the big need for. Most of this stuff has to go to other things, such as capital improvement projects, you know, public facilities, economic development. It's that public service cap that really is a struggle.
Do you ever want a lesson in how federal red tape can take a good program and make it almost unnavigable? I think CDBG is a really good example of that. There's some wonderful opportunities to use it for economic development efforts, but the red tape that comes with economic development, compared to other areas, is just, it just was unbelievable, from the projects that we were trying to do.
More staff and temp.
Thank heavens, that's the only federal program that's messed up. Otherwise, we'd be in trouble.
Otherwise, we'd be in trouble, yeah.
So, just a real quick recap on CDBG. Basically, by using, by recommend, the recommendations to use all the prior year fund, we're anticipating only about $40,000 being left in prior year fund. That will roll into next year, but leaves a little bit there in case we have any issues. Onto home, all of the applications that we received were recommended for funding, however, at last year- However, at last year, well, last week, we were in front of you with a substantial amendment to modify how we were running that process and to allow all of our prior year funding to go to the rental pot. This year's recommendation is to keep the decision-making powers at the council and all of the available funding after the required set aside for the Community Housing Development Organization and the admin, whatever's, what's left to be put into the rental housing project. And we have received four projects that are going for tax credits and we will be in front of you at the same time the resolution, we will be in front of you with the resolution to finally approve that pot of money into the rental, outlining all four of those projects and asking for council to determine, you know, who we're going to fund and in what order. At this point, all of this funding, if this was also approved, we're only $85,000 short of meeting all four of those requests. So it's a pretty good position for us to be in. So that's part of the recommendations, is to put that money into the rental housing. I believe it's about $450,000. Onto rapid, or ESG or Emergency Solutions Grant. This one is, this is where you can see what council, or what the committee made some real big changes. Based purely on the scores, all of this money was going into rapid rehousing and none of it was going to shelter or outreach. So we had offered three alternatives to the subcommittee. This one is to fund equal to what they received last year and go down until we run out of money. So the only one that would not be getting to the same funding that they received last year was cast. They went, what was their last year was? Last year they received 30,000 and this year they would only be receiving 16,000. Again, here's where you can see the requests going up. Last year it was 30,000 and it's 80 now. So, I mean, they have a lot, their needs are going up as well. So this is the recommendation so that we can, we can fund all of the different important activities in our community. So.
Just a clarification on Slide 18, because I keep looking for, it says alternative three. Where's one and two? Or is it not really an alternative, it's a recommendation?
It's a recommendation, I apologize. We had presented three alternatives to the subcommittee and this is the one they're recommending to council.
Okay, so it's?
It's a recommendation, I apologize.
You're not giving us alternatives?
Not yet. It's come in here. The Human Services and ABC, which is a better community, funding, we had a lot of discussion in the subcommittee level about this too. And we are still working on reconciling this account, but we have reconciled enough that we feel comfortable that we have more than we anticipated. We, 108 was going forward, we're comfortable with 190 at this point. We're still, like I said, working on the different reports from the different systems so we can reconcile this. Now, what we did learn is that the way we thought this account worked was at the end of a fiscal year, we had a hard number that we could go through an annual process and fund that the following year. It's not how it's working. We are actually awarding based on estimates. So we really need to have a methodology here, and this was not discussed at the subcommittee level, this was all found out afterwards. We really have to have a methodology here that is the same as the federal, what do we do if we have more or less? We're estimating 190, well, we're estimating 207 based on last year's actuals. So pretty confident there should be about 100, should be 190 in there by the end of this fiscal year for the contracts for next year. So that would be one of the things, is making sure that we have a methodology approved for this as well. We, as part of the discussion at the subcommittee, council, staff has come up with three options and again, this was not at the subcommittee, this was not decided at the subcommittee. Three options of moving forward with the Human Services and ABC funding. We could, just like the federal dollars, fund the requested amounts until we run out of money. That would put us at, and I believe you have charts in front of you, but I'll, I have it on a couple of slides here. It'll take us down to East Valley Adult Resources, a portion of what they asked for. We could fund amounts equal to what they got last year and not give them the increases, the few folks that have asked for increases, until we run out of money. And we're working with 190 right now of ABC and 512 of Human Services. Until, that would get us down to Community Legal Services. Or option three, hold off on this funding until we're further along with the city's process because one of the recommendations out of the subcommittee is to increase this pool of money by 150,000 and 150 for the next three or four years, I believe it was. So that may or may not happen as part of the process and so we've outlined three options here for the council today. We could hold off because they're not, we're not subject to timelines that we are with the federal government on these funds.
Okay. I'm looking at your spreadsheet here. So option one, East Valley Adult Resources, that gets us down to line 15, am I reading that right? Because the color coding isn't there.
Yes. Option one would get us down to line 18. That would get us all the way down to 18.
That's Mark Center.
And Mark Center would receive 19, little, almost 20,000 as opposed to their request of 29,000.
Okay, that's what I'm getting. Option one is actually the blue-based and that gets us not to East Valley Adult Resource, but gets us to Mark Center.
Right. Option two adds two more agencies, which are the yellow, but it would only fund Community Legal Services at about 4,100 as opposed to the 41,000 they've asked for. Basically, here's a slide that represents the chart in a little bit easier to read method.
And how much is in the white? How much is unfunded?
Let's go to the next page. All those with the dashes. Basically, there's about 200 and?
68,000.
Yeah, 68,000, that is, that we don't have the funds to.
Okay, so even if we?
Well, that's from requested.
That's requested, yes.
That's not carryover from last year.
But even if we find, what are you saying, we might be able to find another $150,000? We're still not going to get to the bottom of that.
That's, that was the recommendation of the subcommittee.
And where's that 150,000 coming from?
Yeah, that's, I want to be real careful because I think if we remember in the study, in the study session, I don't think there was a whole lot of extra money swimming around or estimated to be swimming around in the budget.
Mr. Brady's not smiling, so I agree.
Well, that's the warning, the warning I received, and maybe I didn't hear it right, Chris, but I think what we're saying is that right now it looks as though our softening revenue as compared with our, in many cases, skyrocketing costs, there's not a huge surplus floating around there that we see right now and basically your instruction so far to departments has been to hold the line until we see how that plays out. So I, you know, I would hope that we could meet that, but I think the question that Councilmember Summers brings up is a good one. I don't want to put a false sense of hope out there for these agencies that says there's money sitting there that we're just gonna, we're just gonna be able to flow around. We don't know that yet.
Will, is there a fourth option, Mayor, where we could go with option one with the idea that if we do have additional funds, then we can continue to go down that list as discussed?
By approving the methodology that we talked about earlier, a methodology for the Human Services, because again, we're working on estimated numbers where we thought we were working on hard numbers, you would be, in a sense, doing that. If we did receive more money, we just keep on going down the line.
Councilmember Kavanaugh?
I think, Mayor, that's one of the reasons for looking at option three because certainly the committee made a recommendation that, that we think the additional money is an important priority for the council to look at, but we're still fairly early in the budget process and that there's going to be other competing priorities. I know that other council members will present for worthy projects and programs throughout the city, but I think from the committee's perspective, we wanted this additional funds to be at least in the mix for council to make a judgment call on, based on the work that Mr. Brady and his staff continue to look at to the refining numbers to see what could be available.
Yeah, and I think that, and I think the definition of option three probably should be amended to say not until after the city budget process, but in a term, basically it's part of the city process. I think that's what I'm hearing.
Yes.
You know, we'd like to put that out there as a priority, but we don't know how this is going to all play out and there's going to have to be some choices made because we don't anticipate that this money's just going to fall out and I, you know, we can make that as part of the process. I just don't want to give the agencies this false hope that somehow there's this money sitting out there that's going to be, we're just waiting to allocate it. We're actually waiting to see how it all fits together with the whole budget because everyone's got their priorities and they're all worthwhile priorities, but reality is going to slap us in the face real quick and that's what we actually have. Councilmember Richards?
Is there a way to maybe go with a hybrid of this? So the things that we have recommended in option two, we can fund now, we can give those awards?
We know we have the money.
Yeah, we know we have the money there, so maybe fund in option two and then we'll take a look at the rest of it. I, you know, looking at this list and, you know, just because somebody applies for a program doesn't mean it necessarily should be funded or has merit, you know? So I know that people really, you know, they value the programs that they're applying for, they may not fit in with our council priorities and if they don't, they shouldn't be funded, you know, that's.
Well, even if they have merit, they still gotta, we have limited resources.
Right. You know, so that's why I like seeing the process that we've gone through to kind of bet these down and then now when we have the hard decisions to make, you know, with limited budget funds, this is what's left, you know, let's pick out the ones that really fit in with our council priorities and make sure those get funded moving forward and maybe some of them don't get funding still and that's.
If I could, what I'm hearing, yeah, we've set, we've set a policy. Option two really follows that policy.
Right.
And we know what funds we have so far and what I, if I'm hearing you right, it's let's follow the policy that you've set up, that the committee set up, go ahead and give them certainty that that will be funded and then if we have extra, we'll then continue that on.
Right.
As opposed to leaving everybody in limbo.
The thing I remember about ABC funds is they're not federal funds, so these are going to be some of the most flexible dollars these agencies get and I think that's a really important thing to realize because the CDBG funds really put you in a very specific box as been described by Tammy and leveraging some of the ABC funds, some of that flexibility to help them with their general expenses, operational expenses, is really important. I know that there is a line in here talking about maybe looking at direct and indirect expenses and putting our ABC funds in that same box, but I would really prefer to make sure that those funds are flexible.
Mayor, council, to that point, I've had some interest from some of you and others talking about if the city were to, if we were to come up with additional dollars, which may, you know, happen in a variety of different ways, one of the things that we've talked about is the possibility that we've been asked to look at is providing for direct services. So not necessarily moving down this list, but also, but providing for the opportunity to provide direct services, credits towards utilities, providing for food vouchers so their services go directly to Mesa individuals. So I think there's some concern, there's a lot of, been a lot of cutbacks in a lot of other cities and we want to make sure whatever dollars are coming, especially from the general fund specifically, that those dollars are going to direct services. So we're trying to come up also with a formula some of you have asked for, is how we could provide for additional maybe credits or whatever to, for individuals that may be serviced by some of these agencies that are Mesa residents that have a, you know, by providing assistance with the utilities would allow them maybe then to use their dollars that they have for housing or for other needs. So we also like the opportunity to present that as an option to the council also.
That's a great idea. And the other thing is the ABC fund needs more funding.
And we're working, yeah.
Yeah, and so to your credit and to, and you think Neil Curley is?
Yes, and there's.
One of the young men and even Mike Hutchinson has volunteered his service. I want to make sure I call him out in case he's in the audience.
And there's others out there that have some, maybe turning and, working with United Way and turning into.
Looking at a marketing campaign of some.
Yeah, and getting it as a tax, you know, exemption, things.
And I think if what I'm hearing you correctly is, there's no doubt that we're here to serve whoever. I mean, this isn't about saying that Mesa residents only have valuable needs, every, or worthy needs, everyone has it. But the reality is, is that we are a regional center and we would hope that some of our, all the cities in the region would contribute to these agencies whose services certainly spill over Mesa's borders, but our responsibility is first to our residents because they're the ones that are paying the taxes that do this and the reality is that other cities cut their budgets, that places an unfair burden on us to fund services for those cities' needs. Now, I have no problem serving the entire region, but I would love it if all the cities around us would share proportionally in that burden. And if they're not going to, I think we have a responsibility to look at ways that we can make sure that our residents receive the most direct benefits and that their, our ability to serve our own residents first is not diluted by others' budget decisions. Is that a, is that a good way of stating that? Okay, I think that's what I heard you say. Okay.
Which goes right into the next slide, which we were asked to take a look at a lot of the applications that came in for the Human Services dollars and try to determine whether, what those dollars were going for. For the, many of them, the request go, is for salaries of their employees or their utilities or their rents, you know, employees like case managers or counselors that are providing that service. Because a lot of those things are not grant-eligible or would fall into the public service category, which already is capped and usually we run out of that money. Some of the applicants, applications, it was hard to tell whether what they were asking for was going to an employee to provide that service or directly to the service. So we can certainly, and we'll shore that up in this coming application. We will ask them to clearly define whether this is a directly, this money is going directly to the client or whether it's going to help with the operations to provide services to the client. So we will ask that that get cleared up a little bit better in next year's applications. So, the final recommendations, we're looking for approval for the methodology for either increase or decrease funding, both in the federal dollars and in the Human Services dollars, because again, we are working on estimates, not, not hard numbers. We would like to see, or the recommendation is to have 100% of the available home funds be designated as rental and to maintain the project, home project approval here at council level. Again, one of the recommendations from the committee was the additional 150, which I believe that will be talked about as part of the budget process. We're looking for approval as recommended today as far as the funding levels or the, what you saw on the charts as of today and then picking one of those options or a hybrid of those options for how to move forward with the Human Services funding.
And I think the option on Human Services was the option two. Is that what I heard? The option two, and then that leaves that tail end to be determined based on budget. Okay?
Okay.
All right. Guidance or do we need a motion on?
Direction.
Direction?
I still moved to give guidance.
I moved by your motion, thank you. Okay, so are there any objections to the, these recommendations that I think came out of the committee with the clarification that on the Human Services option two is the, is the one, is the direction that is given as I described? Is that okay? Dave?
Also with the same methodology on Human Services for more or less funding as we use in the federal side?
More or less.
Okay.
Okay, is that?
That should.
Dave?
Your turn.
Dennis, okay.
Okay.
You have your direction.
Thank you.
Ms. Trippken, I know you requested, we don't normally, Craig Trippken is here, former Phoenix City Council member, thank you for being here. In our study sessions, we normally don't take public comment, so, but thank you for being here and Craig works quite a bit, especially with our shelters and permanent housing solutions. We don't like to use the word shelter anymore, do we? Because that's not the ultimate goal, is to shelter, it's to transition into housing. See, I even got a plug in for you.
Thank you.
Good. Thank you. All righty. Next item is to hear presentations discussed and provide direction on the Lesweer and Main Street Intersection Project.
We're here to get some direction this morning on the configuration of Lesweer and Main Street. I'm Beth Hunning with Engineering. I have Lenny Hume, our Transportation Director, far left, Jody Sorrell, our Transit Director, and my trusty Deputy, Mark Ulstrm, to my right, here to ask.
I'm glad to know he's trusted.
He's trusted.
I was worried there for him. I was worried there for a minute.
That implies she has an untrusted deputy.
Oh, no, not at all. I have good people, really good people. I don't know. And I just, just to set your mind at ease, Mayor, we're really okay with geeky conversations if you want to have one, so.
Thank you. I, I knew you'd appreciate that. Unfortunately, there was only four of us in the entire room.
I know.
That liked that.
But, you know, we're okay with it.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so let's get started. Here's where we are today. You see Pioneer Park in the, in the center part, just north of Maine. We currently have a signal at Mesa Drive and one at Hobson and no signal at Lesweer in between. And it's about 1,300 feet between Mesa Drive and Hobson. Part of the reason we're here to talk to you about this today is because as part of the 2013 bond election, Pioneer Park money was included to upgrade Pioneer Park. And we're learning quite a few things about our parks nowadays. We are very fortunate in that Riverview has been wildly accepted by the public and we're seeing what kind of parking needs are occurring around some of our larger parks. So that's coming into play with the conversations as well. And we'd like to take advantage right now because we do have construction of light rail going on in Maine. And so we have some opportunities to do some different configurations in this area because it will be changing when we bring the train through. So looking at the intersection today, you can see the intersection is slightly offset. There's no traffic signal, although there is full vehicle access and there is no marked crosswalk. The other interesting feature about Lesweer is even though Lesweer looks like a street, it's actually a street built on city park property. It is not a dedicated street right of way, the north of Maine. So that's kind of an interesting designation for that street as well. As part of the light rail project, we looked at this type of configuration where we have a, there will be a station right on the corner, just east of Mesa Drive. So we've got a configuration now where we have a light at Mesa Drive and we'll have a light, a pedestrian crossing at the end of the station. Just to the north of the station is the new park and ride facility that will be under construction very soon. And then you still see the signal at Hobson and they proposed of, to keep full vehicle access at Lesweer, we would have to put in yet another signal at Lesweer because we have to stop the train for vehicles to move across the intersection and pedestrians to move across the intersection. But the challenge for us is that's four signals in 1,300 feet, three of them in less than 700 feet. As a, from just a sheer technical standpoint, it's very difficult to time signals that close together. We also end up with situations where somebody's parked at, say Mesa Drive and their signal's red, but a signal just down the street changes, the driver perceives that their, their signal's changed and they take off through a red signal. So we have a lot of different concerns with this from a technical standpoint. So as part of the park project, when it came up.
Beth, can I ask a quick question? Do we have to have that light between Lesweer and Mesa Drive? Because I didn't see that as an alternative. I mean, is that what, help me remember what the functionality of that light.
Yes, Councilmember, Mayor, Councilmember Richens, that light between Mesa Drive and Lesweer is for the east end of the station platform for people to exit.
Just a crosswalk.
I didn't remember how far back away from Mesa Drive the platform is.
Yeah, it's just a pedestrian crosswalk.
That orange section? The orange section is the platform?
Um, yes, the orange section is, is where the station is.
Oh.
Thanks.
Some reason I thought it was.
I did too.
I thought it was going to be further to the east, more pushing toward Lesweer. That's interesting.
I said that would be only activated.
I'm sorry.
No question.
Yeah, that's only pedestrian.
Only pedestrian activated?
Yes.
It wouldn't be on a timing?
Yeah, exactly.
Oh, okay.
So we've looked at this option and there's a couple of reasons we've looked at this option. We would like to take advantage of the park and ride parking for the park. As it is today, when we have a celebrate Mesa function at the park, you can, you'll see that there's a lot of people parking in the neighborhood and it gets pretty tight in there when we are having functions in the area. Then we would like to consider closing Lesweer to the north and integrating that with the park and the park and rides so that we could get a little more parking on Lesweer and we can actually have a pedestrian walking between the parking area and the park. It does allow us to get rid of one of the signals, it just leaves us with the two signals at Mesa Drive and Hobson and the one pedestrian signal at the end of the platform. It gives us a right in, right out to the south on Lesweer and the crosswalks would be limited to the station and Hobson. We did go out with a survey to the neighborhood. We got a bit of a mixed result, but about a two to one were for option two to close Lesweer and about a third were for option one, and we had a couple that had no opinions. But you can kind of see the distribution, the red is close Lesweer and the blue is leave it open. So.
Let, let me ask you something on option two, and I'm looking at the map and I know this isn't exact, but it, why, why would we leave Lesweer open halfway up there? I mean, Metro, Metro purchased clear back to that landscaping future thing, right?
Yeah.
Why would we leave Lesweer open?
We could, we could close it further north. We do still have to have access to the east side of the park and ride. They were planning for some access to the east side of the parking lot.
Okay, so why don't they move that access further north?
We can.
Okay, because that seems wasted space. If we're going to close it down, that, that roadway on the northern portion of Pioneer Park simply becomes a driveway for the parking lot and that's, that's wasted space.
Who owns the lot on the corner of First and Lesweer, First Street and Lesweer?
Eric Ball.
It's private.
Looks like a vacant lot.
Oh, the vacant lot?
We know who that is.
Okay, we ought to look in that.
I can find out for you.
We can find out.
Now, when it says landscaping future, so Metro owns that?
Yes.
We own it.
Or? We actually.
Who has ti, who has title to that?
I think so. We own it, I think.
Yeah, we owned, we owned it from the beginning. We didn't purchase it. Did we have to purchase?
No, that's part of what you purchased.
I think we purchased.
Did we purchase that?
Yeah.
Okay.
So my question is, we purchased it, do we own it now?
That was, yeah, that was part of the purchase.
Because if, if Metro doesn't have, doesn't have a, doesn't have a, a plan for that and there's that vacant lot there, that seems like a great idea to maybe integrate into a few, into the Pioneer Park plan.
Yes.
Whether it be parking or for the park.
Or just extending the park.
Or just extending the park or something like that. And that way you could take Lesweer out further, basically almost take it clear to First Avenue and then have the entry right there.
Yeah.
Which then expands either Pioneer Park parking or Pioneer Park itself.
So we'll check, we need to check on that property, that corner.
I always wondered why there was that offset. So what you're saying is that the, the, the square right there, and that's why there's the offset on both sides, is actually on park property.
It's on park property. It was actually developed this.
So we're just reclaiming that?
Reclaiming the park, yeah.
Okay. All right. Councilman Richens?
Just wanted to be clear, in option two, Lesweer, south of Maine, closes.
No.
Not under the.
South of Maine, we'd have a right in, right out only. So if you were going eastbound on Maine, you could take a right, south on Lesweer. If you were coming northbound on Lesweer, you could take a right out on Maine.
Why, why do we need that access at all?
It's just an option to leave it there.
I mean, why wouldn't we close Lesweer on the other side too? I mean, who owns the, the vacant parcels to the left of where?
The Barney family does.
The Barney family.
Both, both parcels, both of them. No, I actually concur with Councilmember Richens because I've heard from many of the residents who live, and I know them all very well, live on south Lesweer and they would love for us to abandon that because they're afraid that with light rail coming, it'll drive way more traffic down their street.
So the, so do the same on the south side?
Yeah, just eliminate Lesweer.
Okay.
When it, we can go ahead and close it today. One of the things we were considering though is that when they came in to develop those parcels.
First Avenue, it would just be, the Joneses property is the one that is the closest one.
You just, you just cul-de-sac it right there.
I mean, do you need to cul-de-sac it? Can you use the parking lot there as the turnaround for a fire truck?
I think you need to cul-de-sac it for fire and, you know, that kind of stuff.
And we may have to get some.
Well, you need to at least create a turning radius that a fire truck can turn around in.
So I think what we're looking for, we, let's follow up with that option, but we want to get the direction before it on the north part and then we'll come back.
Well, just so we understand that, that it's easier on the north since we own the park and it's on park land. To the south, and I, I fully support, by the way, abandoning Lesweer on both sides. The reason being is that in some of our initial discussions, both with the development and the Barney and with the, with the church, the idea that we could create a pedestrian mall there or something that would feed and I think would, would actually accelerate whatever development happens there by creating a pedestrian mall, Lesweer serves no, no real purpose there that can't be easily achieved off of First Avenue. There, there's nothing that does there except for, I think you're right, it's going to be a cut through.
Yeah.
With, with the light rail coming and people are going to turn off there, they're going to come there. I think it's going to be a, a cut through. So I would support.
Okay.
Exploring possibilities of shutting Lesweer down south also.
Okay, we can do that.
Because I think there's some good, there's some really cool things that could probably happen as it relates to pedestrian mall that feeds development, feeds the temple traffic, feeds, you know, those things that I think would enhance that entire area.
So you could, you could really create a, a turnaround within that area that doesn't necessarily look like a conventional cul-de-sac.
Oh, no. I mean, yes, you're right, yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, because I, I just think of the cul-de-sac we did when we closed Ninth Street. And I mean, you could land a Huey in the middle of this thing. It's huge.
Well, there's different.
It's a ridiculously large.
I think the problem is there's different standards, you know, if you go to the fire department, yeah, they're all gone. They want to be able to take their largest ladder truck and have no overhang, okay?
Right.
In other words, you know, there, there are different standards. And one of the standard is, is they can completely turn around without ever overhanging the curb.
Yeah.
Well, you know, as fire trucks stick like, what, Scott, four or five feet out from the, the wheelbase? So actually you could get a, you could get a much smaller turn radius if they'll allow you to turn and let some overhang over the sidewalk. You understand what I mean?
Yeah.
There's different standards. We just need to, we just need to come to the standard that works best for that area.
Red fire trucks turn narrower than white ones.
The color does mean everything, doesn't it?
Oh.
No, what I, well, see, what I've heard, well, actually Scott is right. He's absolutely right. The drivers of the white trucks are much more proficient than the drivers of the red trucks.
Oh.
That's been proven. Somehow when you get behind a red truck.
On fire, I'll get it.
You'll find it.
You'll know where it is and when to get there.
You'll at least find it, okay.
It might have been a street to start with, but it is now.
We just want, because we're really in the thick of planning out Pioneer Park, we thought it would make sense to incorporate this in part of the design. And then let's come back and we'll work on some concepts for the south end too.
Hey, and by the way, in Metro, when we're talking to them, we need to be the driver of a lot of that design there as opposed to just.
Yes, I agree.
Being subservient to their deal on this park and ride. I mean, they have, they're going to have two full accesses, one off of Mesa Drive, one off of Main Street. That's the, you know, Lesweer will never be their, their primary access and shouldn't be their primary access. I don't know that, I'm not, I don't feel comfortable with dumping parking lot traffic onto local streets when you have two arterials that you can, you can run traffic off of. And so I, I would say on that east and northeast entryway, you know, let us be the one that decides what we're going to let Metro, is that?
That's fine.
Yeah, that's true. And what we like about this, this fits very well because it becomes overflow parking for the park.
Right.
Right.
So it's a great benefit and, and we are, yeah, so, but we will work with Metro.
Okay.
And Mark did just remind me that when the end of line moves to Gilbert, we will no longer need that east access, no matter what, so we could eventually eliminate it to.
Right. So I mean, what you, you'd still have an access off of Lesweer, clear up at the north part, but it wouldn't be a primary access.
Right, right, right.
It would just be a secondary access because you want that for the park itself. Okay. All right.
Okay.
So I think the, I think the direction is, from what I've heard, is move ahead, expand the north abandonment as far north as we can, utilize that or incorporate that in the design either for our additional parking or coal utilization with the park and ride for the park or the park itself. Make that an integral part of it. And then also move ahead with abandonment of Lesweer to the south with the idea that we would bulb it or whatever you want to say, end it down there where the houses are and then reach out to the landowners adjacent, which would be the Barney family and the church, and see how we can incorporate it. If we do it right, it would be nice if certainly we could enhance that, create a really nice, maybe mini park or extension of the park or pedestrian mall or something that would really, I think that would dress up that whole area and make that a signature place. That, that intersection moved from just a simple intersection to really a signature point that would be a gathering place for people to come on both sides of Main Street. Is that okay with everyone, that direction? Okay, you've got it.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Okay, job order contracting project. Any questions from the council? All right. Reports on meetings and conferences attended. Councilman Kavanaugh?
Mayor, just briefly, I and several other members of the council went to Mesa Community College yesterday for the groundbreaking for their new student services center, which is a major project that's one of three underway, totaling $35 million of new construction on, on the campus right there. And it's going to be a much needed asset to the community college and so we're very pleased that council members Luna and Glover and Summers, I think, were all there.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Summers?
Yeah, I attended an event. We launched a food desert bus called Fresh Express with Discovery Triangle. Now, this is over in Phoenix and Tempe. The RPTA took an old bus and provided it to the, the Discovery Triangle group. And what they've done is they've put fresh fruits and vegetables on it. So essentially what they were doing is they're driving those fruits and vegetables to areas that don't have access to a quality market. In addition, they have partnered with a healthcare group to provide immunizations and other type of public health outreach to the communities. And it's a, a very unique way of, of addressing healthcare and healthy food challenges. So it'll be interesting to see how this works out. It'll be located mostly in south, yes, my photograph, thanks for pulling that particular one up, in south Phoenix and, and Tempe. And hopefully if this is successful, which I expect it will be, we'll, we'll see it expand to other, other communities. Really interesting project.
Thank you. Anyone else? I've got three to talk about. First of all, I was, I was privileged to host about 45 mayors from around the country for leadership meeting for the US Conference of Mayors last weekend, which in spite of the, or not in spite of, in lieu of the, the events that took place in our state was fairly interesting. But it was, it was great to see mayors from around the country be able to enjoy our metro area and, and enjoy doing that. The other thing is that Mayor, uh, Mayor, Councilmember Kavanaugh and the mayor and I had the privilege of attending the Cactus League kickoff luncheon Wednesday?
Tuesday.
Yeah. No, Tuesday. Today's Thursday, Tuesday. About 400 officials from throughout the valley, all the Cactus League cities and teams and, and volunteer groups gathered at the New Cubs Park. and volunteer groups gathered at the New Cubs Park. I think this was one of the biggest I've been to. I think the, the interest in the park was, was of course, the, the star and what brought everyone in. Thanks to Mark Hirschberg and his staff and all those for helping, helping to, to sponsor that. Great get-together for, and the first Cactus League Hall of Fame was named. You know, we, we appreciate that, because the leader in, in this effort to really, really remember and to preserve Cactus League history and to celebrate Cactus History was started by our own Mesa Historical Society, and of course, the city of Mesa is the largest partner